...a deadline that was my birthday.
While in the airport, she posted a call to action on her Facebook page. Instead of sending birthday wishes, she asked her social media network to contact Nevada Magazine and place a vote.
And so I just quickly put it on Facebook and said, "Hey, everybody, if you want to give me a good birthday present this year, please vote for Sparks for the Nevada Magazine Tour, and we'll be featured," and people responded. Adam jumped on it as well, and we shut down their server. Everybody was so excited about Sparks and has that great community pride.
The publication's Tour Around Nevada campaign invited the public to vote for their favorite city or town. The public response? The City of Sparks, Nevada received the most votes for favorite city. Nevada Magazine focuses on travel and tourism throughout the state and has been published for 80 years. Publisher Janet Geary attended the mayor's 2016 State of the City address.
Sparks got a huge, huge response for our March-April edition, and so they were our winner of our March-April edition. We have a really nice story in the magazine about Sparks, and we wanted to honor the mayor today.
The exposure is a great promotion for the city, but it's also something more. The overwhelming response from Sparks citizens says something important.
Well, you know, it just tells people that the people that live in Sparks love living here. They love the community, they're very supportive of the community, and, you know, since we ask all the different cities to participate, and Sparks was just overwhelmingly the winner, it lets, you know, it leaves us to believe that Sparks is very much loved by its community and by its residents.
People who live in Sparks love Sparks. They're not here because they have to be, they're here because they choose to be, and that just really came out in this story.
And that's it for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. You can follow us on Facebook or Twitter, or log on to CityofSparks.us for more news and information. State Senator Debbie Smith represented the City of Sparks since 2000. She was a tireless advocate for issues like education and a true champion for the City of Sparks. Senator Smith passed away earlier this year, and we miss her tremendously. We conclude our program in her honor.
Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
Okay, we'll call the Sparks City Council meeting of June 13th with the roll call, please.
Mayor Martini, absent. Council members Ratty, Lawson, Smith, Bybee, Schmidt, City Attorney Adams, City Manager Driscoll. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you for the invocation. Pastor Barb West, come on up for Barb. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Would you all bow your heads with me? So, our Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this leadership team. We pray that you would direct, protect, and provide for them, help them to know how to lead our great city. And Lord, we just lift up all of that's going on around here with all of the new building going on and people moving in, and we pray that you would help us to welcome them and be, help them to be a part of our community. And we ask that you would give all of these members of our leadership great wisdom to know just exactly how to do the business that's at hand today. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Barb. If you remain standing to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Sherlene, would you lead us?
Please show me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a justice for all.
Okay, before we get into public comment, I'd like to take a minute and observe some silence for the events that happened in Florida. If you bow your heads in your thoughts. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I will open up the public comment. I do have one card. Anybody wishing to speak, please come down, fill out a card, and we'll get you up next. Diana Black, come on down. Welcome, Diana.
Members, I'm a little new at this. I haven't been here for a while.
You can have a seat.
Kind of bear with me. Can I stand?
Sure.
Okay. Is that good there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My husband and I have lived in Sparks for over 20 years, and in the last 10 years, we've walked Sparks, kind of go downhill, and there was a couple of problems approached about eight months ago about the junk cars and the junky yards, and this is still going on, and plus the alleys have junk cars in them too. And a lot of our roads are falling apart, and Sparks has also a noise problem. Loud boom boxes 24 hours, day and night, going by the residents, waking everybody up. I don't know if there's ever been anybody approached that problem before. And also, we have a barking dog problem, which Animal Control is trying to take care of that. And also, I guess the City Council okayed chickens for in the city. Why would you do that when we have so many other problems now we have to put up with Also, and animal, that just puts more on Animal Control. And a lot of people are moving out of Sparks. We've got houses coming up for sale just once a month. And there's also a big problem around the theater. You have flower, where they plant flowers and stuff, you find needles throwed in all these planting areas. I don't know if that's considered a bad area, and also behind the theater, I go for a lot of walks. And also, we need more code officers and more police force. And my last question is, doesn't pertain to any of that. At one time, they were going to put a lighthouse out at the marina. What happened to it and the money? Thank you for your time. Anybody have any questions for me?
No, Diana, but have you called the code enforcement on some of the issues that you noted?
Oh, yes.
And? Is there a response?
For...
From code enforcement?
For barking dogs?
No, for the cars, the old cars, anything like that.
I've reported that lots of times. I called the police department one time, and this was a residence, and he was blowing the top off of his house.
Okay. Mr. Manager, if you'd have somebody contact Diana and get the information right here. Thank you. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring her back to the council. Approval of the agenda? Anybody want to pull anything or move it? Looking for a motion? Oh, Julia. Sorry. Forgot to head and look at that screen. Second? Mr. Schmidt? Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Sometime today. There. Okay, passes unanimously. Item number seven, proclamation, Holly Quick Memorial Day. Is there somebody here to receive this proclamation? Did I skip it? Okay. One second, I'm sorry. Minutes. Consideration possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of May 23rd. Any corrections? Okay, we have a motion. Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll move on. Holly Quick proclamation, come on down. Have a seat. If you could just tell me who you are and...
Yes, I'm Gigi Sefcek. I'm victim advocate with the District Attorney's Office, and I'm the Chair of the Alliance for Victims' Rights.
Okay.
Amanda Cuevas, Advocate at Safe and Brace and Program Manager at Tucas de Latina, and I am the Secretary for the Alliance for Victims' Rights.
Okay, great. I'll read the proclamation, and then you can say a few words if you'd like. Whereas on September 14th, 2006, 16-year-old Sparks resident Holly Quick lost her life to a violent crime. And whereas the loss of this young and beautiful girl shook the Sparks community and brought grief and sadness throughout the area. And whereas the dedicated Sparks Police Department investigated and helped to bring justice to this tragic event. And whereas, while evil still lurks among us, it is imperative that our law enforcement agencies continue their steadfast efforts together to eradicate and bring to justice perpetrators of violent crime. And whereas, in Holly's memory, the City of Sparks created the Holly Quick Memorial at the Sparks Marina as a tribute to Holly and all victims of violent crime. And whereas, the Holly Quick Memorial provides a place where adults, children, teens, and Holly's family members can express their feelings associated with her death and those of others who have died from violence. And whereas, the City of Sparks and the Alliance for Victims' Rights honor victims and family members of victims of violent crimes, and together remain committed to providing justice and honor. Now, therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, do hereby proclaim June 23rd as 2016 as Holly Quick Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you. This memorial or community garden was an effort of different agencies. Back in 2009, we had the Crisis Call Center, Sparks Police Department, which have some representatives here. Jason Woodard, he was also instrumental in bringing this about. It was Home Depot, the Orange Team. There were many agencies, and the Alliance for Victims' Rights comprised several of us. So, we brought some invitations. We'd like to hand them down, see if you want to honor us with your presence that day. This memorial is not just to honor Holly's memory, but also victims of a crime, all types of crimes, not just homicide. And so, please, acknowledge that day. We're going to have pause for love, and some people are going to be working on quilts to, for their loved ones. And we're going to have barbecue. We're going to have food from Sparks PD that they're providing.
Good. What's the date on that?
It's the 23rd, June 23rd.
And where's it going to be at?
5:30. At the marina, right there at the memorial.
You got a lot of people on TV watching the...
Oh, wow.
Millions of people.
You'll see balloons, and you'll see where it is.
Thank you.
Anything from you? Yeah, give that to Teresa over there, and thank you so much.
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we're back. Okay, proclamation for Reno Rodeo Days. I don't have to guess who's here. Come on down. Howdy. Why don't you introduce yourselves?
Okay.
Troy Gardner, Director.
Bill Johnson, Executive Committee.
Okay. I'll read the proclamation, and then you can say a few words or a lot of words, whatever you'd like to do.
Or no words.
No, no words, yeah. Whereas, the Reno Rodeo will be held June 16th through the 25th, 2016. And whereas, in its historic 97th year, the Reno Rodeo has been an important tradition in the northern Nevada area. And whereas, the Reno Rodeo is made possible with the assistance of hundreds of volunteers and thousands of fans and spectators who enjoy every minute of the exciting variety of rodeo events and entertainment. And whereas, the Reno Rodeo Foundation is a nonprofit group dedicated to keeping the history and the grandeur of rodeo alive. And whereas, since 1986, the Reno Rodeo Foundation, as the giving arm of the Reno Rodeo, has donated more than $6 million to educational scholarships, special children's charities, purchasing new clothing for kids rescued from unsafe homes, literacy programs to at-risk youth, and serves as the anchor for large capital projects to improve the lives of children. And whereas, started by community leaders, the Reno Rodeo has grown into an important competition on the rodeo circuit, attracting top cowboys and cowgirls, and offering top prizes that truly make it the wildest, richest rodeo in the West. Now, therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim June 16th through the 25th as Reno Rodeo Days. Thank you so much. Your charity work, the denim pockets and the food drives you do is, you're first-class when you need it. It's wonderful. Let me come down and give you this, and then we'd like you to say a few words. Why don't you come up? Somebody else take a picture.
You guys don't want me in the picture.
I need my hat. Thank you.
Reno rodeo volunteers, which are thousands, they come not only from Reno, they come from Sparks. And without Sparks volunteers and support, we couldn't put this rodeo on. It's a big rodeo. We are wanting to be number one in the nation. We're working right now. We're probably number four. Rodeo is our life. This is my 36th year, and I tell you, it's unbelievable how we've grown because of the volunteers that come out of both Reno and Sparks, and we want to thank you.
Opening night is Thursday?
Opening night is Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, we have a concert with Billy Carrington.
Okay.
And it's going to be, the carnals, it's going to be open, the food court's going to be opening, the jacktins going to be open, and it's an outdoor performance. Hopefully, it won't rain, and hopefully, it'll be nice and cool.
You've got to have the jacktins open, that's for sure.
The jacktins will be open. We have a new one, the courstans going to be open also.
Okay, good.
And the courstans new this year, it's for people that are 30 years of age and older. We're trying to pull that generation away from the jacktins and have them, give them a little more enjoyment too.
There you go. Thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to thank you for your organization, what you do for this community through the years has been truly outstanding. My son's been a volunteer for several years with the Rodeo Foundation, have lots of friends and other people in the community I know that are involved, and it's one of the greatest events that we have in our community. But thank you so much for what you do for our community, and a great event for all of us to attend. Thank you.
It's like I said, it's the volunteers that do it. It's not just one individual person. And we have a new general manager that's taking us to a new level, and so if you need anything, please call George Combs at the rodeo office and talk to him.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I know these folks, the next group of folks here. Levon, Jimmy, you want to come on down, and is Mike going to join you? Come on down. You need some, you need some help up there, yeah. Have a seat. I know. This is near and dear to my heart, so let me read, introduce yourselves if you would.
Jimmy Reslin.
Levon Brooks.
Okay, both of High Sierra Industries. Okay, City of Sparks proclamation. Whereas, whereas there are a number of people living in our community who have disabilities, and whereas people living with disabilities continue to strive to achieve their full potential and overcome circumstances beyond their control. And whereas, many of these individuals living in northern Nevada have traditionally been underserved, unable to find employment, and developed the skills necessary to live independently. And whereas, High Sierra Industries was established in 1977 to address the needs of this vulnerable population through the development of learning systems that support people with disabilities to be visible, valued members of the community. Whereas, the entire staff at High Sierra Industries continue to work tirelessly to make sure that the people living with disabilities are empowered and celebrated as valuable members of our community. Now, therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby acknowledge High Sierra Industries for its invaluable service to the families and residents in northern Nevada, and proclaim Monday, June 13th, 2016 as Sparks Empower Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Acting Mr. Mayor, does he get like an Academy Award for this job? I'm just thinking.
I probably don't get another job.
No. It's an honor to be here, and very quickly, I was in the grocery store yesterday, and if most of you are like me, I, you know, seek and destroy when I'm in the grocery store. And there was a choo, choo, choo behind me. I said, "God bless you." And she looked at me, and she said, "Thank you for that." And I said, "What happened to kindness and what happened to civility?" And we, in the face of tragedies like the things that happened to us, seems like more frequently Orlando and other things, they didn't just happen overnight. It started with all of us and each and every other, all of us essentially ignoring those small things that we can do every day to make a difference in someone's life, even if it's saying, "God bless you." Jimmy, as many of you know from our community, and if those of you who don't, Jimmy spent over 30 years of his life coming up through the ranks to model, in Model Dairy, and eventually becoming their general manager, and is a beloved member of our community, and now works for our organization. Since then, he often says, "Whenever I encountered a person with a disability in the past, I really kind of took a step back because I didn't either know how to talk to them or know what to say or what kind of a person they might be like." And now, he says...
I take a step forward.
I take a step forward because, golly, I found out they're just like me. So, to the extent that each of us is asking ourselves in your organizations or those that you influence, how many people have you employed with disabilities this year? How many people have you even considered employing with disabilities in your organizations this year or on your campaigns to stuff things or in your construction sites to clean up? Those are, those are good jobs, and we have people to fill them. And those are the little everyday things like, "God bless you," that really represent how we undo this mess. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to be every single one of us taking responsibility for those changes, and thank you for this recognition.
Thank you.
Okay, number 7.4, update on regional air service-related airport affairs by Mayor Lee Mora. And Bill, are you going to come up also? Why don't you? You're not going to sit back there and just...
I'm hiding.
I know. Welcome.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and council members and City Manager Driscoll. Thank you so much. Really, we're here, first of all, today to say thank you for all of your support. And with me today is Bill Eck, one of your two representatives. Adam Mayberry unfortunately was not available today, but we just want to also thank you for such great trustees that you have provided to the airport authority. I just want to note that a week ago, we celebrated the start of Southwest Airlines' three flights to Oakland, and with us to celebrate last Monday morning was Mayor Martini. So, we really appreciated that support. And I think all of you right up here have been at one airport or another recently, and I've got to say, Councilwoman Bybee is there. Of course, she flies out of the airport for her regular job, but she's also probably a very, very frequent supporter of different airport events. So, really good things have been happening at the airport, and in 2015, it was our first year in 10 years that we had annual passenger growth, almost 4% growth in passengers. And we've had seven months of consecutive growth, and really what we've been seeing the first quarter of this year is, is the numbers for passengers are up 11%. So, really, having lost about a third of our passengers in recent years, we're really on the right course going forward, and really reflecting all of the work that you're doing, increasing the economic activity in our community. We're certainly seeing that at the airport. I think I just hit the wrong thing here. It was also a record-setting year for cargo, and again, this is really understandable with, with all of the activity in the community. We again had a record year with over 7% increase in the amount of cargo that was carried in the airport. And again, cargo volume for this first quarter of 2016 is up 20%. So, with the, really the diversification, all of the warehousing and distribution in the community, we're really seeing that reflected in the cargo activity at the airport. So, it's a really, really positive thing because all of the cargo activity also supports certainly keeping our rates and charges for the passenger airlines low, so it's a really positive thing on the passenger side as well. We're really proud of our route map because it was a little over a year ago that we added JetBlue, a brand-new airline, to our airport, and serviced to New York City at JFK. And that flight is doing, you know, very well, and really, we spent 15 years trying to get the flight, not only JetBlue, but certainly serviced to New York City. The other thing that we were really proud of, about a year and a half ago, we reinstated international, scheduled international service to the airport, and that was with Valaris coming in with flights to Guadalajara. And as you know, with a large Hispanic population here, there's really a connectivity to, many of the people in our area have come from the area around Guadalajara. What started as two flights a week on Valaris Airlines to Guadalajara is now three times a week, so that's going quite well. But we're seeing some other flights. I'll get into kind of a list, but I think, you know, really to be on a growth spurt is really a good thing to be seeing right now. But again, it's all the support of all the things that you're doing to support economic development in your community are reflecting very well for passenger and cargo service. development in your community are reflecting very well for passenger and cargo service. As we talked about, we have New York service Guadalajara, we reinstated Boise service last November, and that's on Alaska Airlines. Alaska Airlines has also reinvested certainly in Reno-Tahoe International with Orange County service, they also have service to San Jose. And again, Southwest Airlines, which pulled down six routes, short-haul routes, out of our community three to four years ago, reinstated, had the first service that is added into Reno-Tahoe International with last Sunday on June fifth, starting three flights a day to Oakland. Great opportunity to, to not only connect into the Bay Area, if you fly into Oakland, you can actually take the seamless BART connection to downtown San Francisco, and get to downtown San Francisco from Oakland quicker on BART than if you were to fly into San Francisco International and take BART down to downtown San Francisco. Great connections too, with the buildup by Southwest Airlines out of Oakland, there's very, very good connections out of Oakland. Some of the other air service that we've gotten is last week also, Allegiant Airlines, in, in addition to providing service to Las Vegas, they also started two flights a week to Los Angeles. We also are going to see further expansion by JetBlue with service starting on August fifteenth to Long Beach, and then really, really excited, because starting on December nineteenth and going three times a week during the holidays, will be Delta Airlines to Atlanta. Now, that service, the first quarter of next year, two thousand seventeen, is a weekly service, but what we're really hoping to see is for that flight to grow, because it's certainly one, and lots of demand from this community is to have Atlanta service. One of the things that really has supported us having the ability to add air service is the support that we've had from the Regional Air Service Corporation. Since two thousand and two, we had what was formerly called the Regional Marketing Committee really by our side, providing marketing support for new flights to the community, flights that maybe weren't doing well. About a year and a half ago, this group incorporated so that they could sign a risk mitigation agreement with JetBlue. So now, one of the things that is really happening with this group and growing it going forward is not only having the tourism community as part of the Regional Air Service Corporation, but certainly having business entities also join this, this coalition really to support air service. It's really what makes us distinctive when we go in and talk to an airline, that we have this kind of support in our community. One of the other exciting things happening at our General Aviation Airport, Reno-Stead Airport, is that we, the Board of Trustees did select a master developer for the Reno-Stead Airport Business Park, and that's Dermani Properties in Hillwood, and they're looking at development, we're finalizing an agreement with them, and we'll go forward with looking at development, certainly having development at Reno-Stead that is compatible certainly with the Reno air races. I've just got to say, one of your trustees, Bill Eck here, and I'm so glad he could join us today, he is our, your liaison from, to the Stead Airport, and certainly to the Stead users, and has been very involved, and, and all the things have been going quite well certainly out at Stead. So really, this, Stead Airport is really identified as a future regional job center, and we're looking forward to development that is hopefully primarily focused initially, and certainly in the future, on aerospace and aviation, and certainly the drone activity. I'll just maybe mention that we're very proud to be one of the six Federal Aviation Administration sites at Stead Airport, and for the State of Nevada for testing the unmanned aircraft systems. Many of you have heard about some of the issues that we've had with U.S. Customs and Border Protection, we are, been certainly pressing the U.S. Customs to have a better customer experience for people that are flying into Reno on the Valaris flight. I can tell you right now that last week, we saw an improvement in our processing time down to about one and a half hours, so we're making progress, and one of the things is, at the end of the day, we've told Customs, "We need more than three people in our facility to properly process customers," but there has not been a mechanism for the federal government to accept our payments, so we're working through certainly legislation of having all of our congressional delegation involved, and trying to find a mechanism so that we can add staffing going forward. So just to kind of quickly wrap up and tell you what's new, with all the changes in our community, with over fifty thousand new jobs coming to our community in the next five years, we really felt it was time to do, after twenty years, we needed to update our master plan, so we will be going to our board next month to really have, confirm a selection of a consultant for a master plan update. Those of you who have been hearing about some of the TSA issues, other airports, I can tell you that our, our airport has been very fortunate, generally, most recently, the wait was only about eleven minutes to get through the checkpoint, and we have not really in recent times exceeded twenty minutes. But one of the things that you can do to guarantee you'll have a, kind of a shorter wait, certainly at Reno-Tahoe International and other places, is to sign up for TSA pre-check, and when this service was going to go away in our community, we made space in the airport, we are charging them, but we made space to have an enrollment location in the airport that, so it makes it a whole lot easier to sign up for TSA pre-check. We do have Uber, since earlier this year, we got Uber and Lyft, and they're doing quite well out of the airport. One of the exciting things is that in the last ten years, we've only had one CEO, and that was the CEO of Southwest Airlines, that came to really see our community, but this year, we're hosting an International Aviation Forecast Conference, and we will have CEOs and executive leaders from quite a few airlines visiting our community because of that conference. Again, we're really excited about, you know, having a positive experience for our customers every day, and we were most recently recognized for a Customer Service Award, and also because we like a customer, we like to have a good place for our employees to work, we also got an HR award as well. With that, I'm really just here to say thank you for all of your support, we appreciate you attending airport events, we really thank you for trustees like Bill Eck, who's served seven years at the airport, and also Adam Mayberry, so we appreciate everything that you're doing for us, and just keep on improving the economy, because it's reflecting so well for us, thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to say, first, I'd like to thank, thank you, Mayor Lee, and the board for all the work that you do, and I see it not only when I'm traveling myself, but looking in the community, what you've done, and the, bringing more air service here is critical, especially the Bay Area connection for all of us that are going to the Bay Area for businesses that are coming in and travelers, a very important expansion that, that was lacking, and I'm glad to see that back. And I will have to say, on TSA and your security screenings, I've always said, and I tell people this, I fly internationally, and I've been flying thirty-nine years, so I go through a lot of airports, and I think that TSA and our screening of passengers here is one of the best anywhere, because not only are they friendly, very friendly, very customer-service oriented, it's not, it's a painful experience to go to an airport, it's really kind of cruel and unusual punishment to try to get, and, you know, just for people, especially if you don't fly a lot, to get through security, to get down to the gate, I mean, it's stressful for people. So, your, your security makes it how they treat people, and the fact that they're very vigilant, so they can be customer-service driven, but I always feel like they're really watching carefully, and that's important, I think, to all of us, but to me, who's on an airplane, I want to make sure that security is good and thorough, and I think they do an amazing job, and I have to put a plug in for pause, pause for passengers with your dog program, my dad has his dog down there, and that's an amazing program, if you haven't seen the dogs in the airport, to relieve pressure and stress on people, it's, it's a great program, and I'm glad you've added that, so thank you.
I think your, your father's dog always brings us toy, right? He is the cutest dog. No, thank you very much for that compliment, but you know, it's really always, it's, you know, we, we work really hard to have a positive experience for people, and really, the pause for passengers is an important part of that, and we have a team called Kindness Takes Flight, which teams with the, the dog teams.
Thank you, Ms. Ratty.
Well, first of all, the, the pause piece, I just have to say, I was at a, in the airport and had a flight that was delayed by an hour and a half, and like within five minutes of them announcing that the flight had been delayed for an hour and a half, there were four dogs in our area.
Calm people down.
It was great, it works, it's amazing. I'm curious about, so I'm obviously a fan of the New York flight, I'll be hopping on that tonight again, and I'm curious, I know that that was a new strategy for us to do a risk mitigation contract, and are you able to share results, have we needed to tap into that resource significantly, has it been a good strategy? What's that look like for us?
You know, we can't dive too deep into it, because any time we sign a risk mitigation agreement with an airline, it is confidential, the funds have been spent, we've had a year of the flight, and, you know, the, it's eighty-five percent or so load factors, which is, is kind of what they expected, pretty good, and I think, you know, that flight is, we just, you know, it's, it's on its own at this point in time, and we're still looking to do, the community is doing some marketing for it, but I think, you know, we're really as one of those flights, we just, you know, hope that going forward, the community, you know, continues to support that flight, because it's an important part of certainly our link to the East Coast.
My anecdotal feedback is it really did feel like that flight benefited significantly from the good winter that we had at the ski resort, it seemed like every time I was on, it was filled with skiers and snowboarders who were excited to be going to Tahoe.
Absolutely, and Burning Man will be the next thing. JetBlue has actually added extra flights to facilitate people coming to the community for Burning Man.
Interesting. Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I do, I was on the six-ten flight to Oakland on Monday morning, I thought that was the first flight, but it was on Sunday.
It was, but we celebrated Monday.
I know, but I was gone by then. What are we trying to get down to in customs? An hour and a half wait, seems really excessive.
We're actually, actually, we're trying to get to ninety minutes and do better than that, and we only got to ninety minutes last week, because we've had some very aggressive, I, I would say, intervention from Congressman Mark Amade, who got our port director to help in with primary processing, and that just shaved about a half an hour off of processing time. So, we'd like to have another one or two people, really to help with that processing time, get it down to even lower. But, you know, where we started with two and a half hours, if we can be at ninety minutes, that's a whole lot better, but we have had, you know, help from the community, and certainly had, this is one issue that our congressional delegation is certainly united on, trying to resolve what needs to be done for customs, and, you know, again, we've said, if they're not going to allocate more people, we'll pay for it, and, you know, it seems so silly that there's no mechanism for us to be able to do that, so there's legislations, some, some legislative changes and appropriations bills going forward.
And we met with Congressman Amade last week, and he, he railed for the airport to get that extra help. He said there's three customs agents, one's the supervisor, so he doesn't check baggage.
He does now.
Oh, he does now?
Thanks to a recent meeting with the congressman.
Good. Mark's good, he'll, he'll get it done if he can. Give us the TSA location at the airport and the hours of operation.
I believe they're open Monday to Friday, eight to five, you can go online and sign up, and you can actually get your appointment online. If you go into the ticketing area, that's where there is a pre-check signup location, but it's easiest if you do it online and get an appointment, but we've expanded hours recently in the last month, it was only three days a week, now it's five, but it's very, very convenient, we're seeing more people sign up. And, you know, again, our, our wait times have been pretty good here in Reno, but what you're going to face if you're going to Las Vegas or other certainly communities and airports across the country, it may be worth that eighty-five dollars for five years.
Yeah, actually, Reno, the, the pre-check line was longer than the regular line, but it went through just as fast, it goes through pretty fast.
Good to know.
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I just want to just point out that this, you know, whole problem with security at the airport in regards to the borders and custom patrols, that's already cost us substantial in this community, you know, I don't know if you remember, we have two flights to London, or Manchester, I believe, that Thomas Cook...
Gatwick.
Goes to Manchester, Thomas Cook Airlines, and, you know, so there's, there's a huge financial cost that we're absorbing right now, that we'd have almost a year under our belt with an international airline, so this is quite important for this item to be resolved as soon as possible.
Thank you very much for that, and I will tell you that an international flight such as a Guadalajara flight, for each flight that comes in, it's ten million dollars a year for three flights a week, that's thirty million dollars in economic activity, so you're so right, those international flights mean a lot of economic activity for the local community.
I was down in Las Vegas this weekend, and Thomas Cook Airlines were all over the place at the Las Vegas Airport, so, you know, that those people have just been diverted to Las Vegas.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Thank you so much, appreciate you guys doing a great job out there.
Thank you so much for your support.
Bill, you want to say something?
I might have one thing I'd like to say. A friend here is talking about all the positive things that have gone on in this airport, that's the reason I'm sitting right there, that with the, the employees out there are happy folks, they're happy to be there, they help each other, it's a very, very good place to be. Thank you.
Thank you for the commercial.
Thanks, Bill. You're about to senior member out there on the board, aren't you?
Just about.
Just about, yeah, good for you. Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull an item, or looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
Move to approve consent items eight point one through eight point seven.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Nine point one, consideration of possible approval of reapportionment of assessments levied under ordinance number two-three-nine-seven, local improvement district number three, which is the Legends at Sparks Marina. And Mr. Kruetz?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council, for the record, Neil Kruetz, Assistant City Manager, I am pinch hitting for your Community Services Director today, as he's got business elsewhere. You'll recall that when the Legends project was originally constructed and opened in two thousand and eight, part of the financing package was a local improvement district out there to pay for streets, storm drain, sanitary sewer, water, potable water supply, and effluent. Costs to develop that out there were spread amongst the property owners, and as the project continues to, to develop, and additional parcels are required to facilitate the construction out there, we have to go through a process by which we reapportion those assessments as those property lines change, and that's what we're doing here, this is actually the third reapportionment that we've been through since two thousand and eight, and taking the, you know, the main shopping center parcel, that's broken into two pieces currently, want to, want to redistribute that and, and create a couple more, so we, we bring the engineer onboard to look at the development plan, to reassign proportionate shares of traffic and storm drain and, and sewer and, and water, and then, you know, rebalance those so that the, the bondholders, you know, that, that bought, that bought those bonds initially are, are, are made whole, just that the distribution of how the payments are made flows with how development happens out on the project. So we bring in a draft report before you, and that's what I'm here today, today to do, to seek your approval, we have had it reviewed by an outside engineering firm, and they have concurred with the, with, with the work, that the reapportionment is appropriate, and we are withholding, allowing any parcel maps to record until we receive the approval or consent, if you will, from the city council. With that, I'd be happy to try and answer any, any questions that you might have.
Okay, questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to approve reapportment number three to assessments levied upon ordinance two-three-nine-seven, local improvement district number three, Legends at the Sparks Marina.
Okay, we have a motion. Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That's right, Julie left room, so passes unanimously with those present, thank you, Neil. Okay, nine point two, consideration of possible approval of resolution number three-two-nine-six to establish an Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for the City of Sparks. Francine, how are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Francine Burge, City of Sparks, Special Events Supervisor, for the record. I am here to present a resolution to create an Arts Commission. The purpose of the Arts Commission is going to be an advisory role to gather information and to advise the city council on manners of arts and culture. The roles of the commissioners that we will recruit and, and place will be to be arts advocates for the arts to the city council, so we're looking for experts in arts in certain disciplines, and also people with experience working within our governmental agencies. Let's see, the city manager has committed to recruit for the next three city council meetings, so, in about a month and a half, we'll be ready to put together a slate for you to vote on. So the mission will be to gather and compile information also from the public to develop a strategic plan when it comes to arts and culture that will be reflective of our city and our great heritage, and with that, I will welcome any questions or comments.
Mr. Lawson?
Francine, where does the twenty-four thousand dollars come from?
The twenty-four thousand is what we're starting with, two years ago, we enacted through the Parks and Rec Commission, a couple of fees, one was park usage fee, and one was some special event permitting fees, to go into an asset preservation fund to be determined later, knowing that we were probably going to earmark it for using it for arts programs.
And so, it says over budget, is that because there is no line item for this, or because there hasn't been a Arts Commission?
Correct.
Okay. And then, what do you anticipate spending the money on? Insurance for art and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, with twenty-four thousand, you don't really have a whole lot to start with, but the good thing is, is that we can roll it over, and once the plan is put into place, then we'll be able to have a better idea on how we want to spend that money.
Okay. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
Councilman Lawson asked a couple of my questions on the budget side of it. I do support this absolutely. I would love to see the arts increased in the City of Sparks and what we can do, you know, differently from our neighbors that is unique to Sparks, and I see that that's part of your goals. And then, as far as the funding, is it to per, are the costs primarily for insurance and for items themselves? Is there any administrative additional cost that you're looking at that would come into play? And obviously, they're volunteers, so I'm just trying to nail down, you know, where the money, whether it's twenty-four thousand or we have more and we receive grants, is it purchasing and insurance for particular arts and art projects that you're envisioning the funding being spent?
I know, it's so exciting to get ahead of myself and say, oh, we can do this, and this, and this. But it's really, the proper placement is to put the commissioners in place, having these arts advocates, and also getting feedback from the public to find out how that money should be spent, and not me dictating exactly how it should be done. I mean, there's several different avenues that we can go after, and I think that in future years, finding ways of finding new funding, whether it's through grants and sponsorships, finding more money out there so that we can do large installations and larger projects.
And are you kind of, you know, I would guess maybe the hope too of the people you are able to place on this commission are people that are in the arts community that would have connections and, you know, there's resources, know where to go for endowments, for funding, for, that they would bring that to the table also, that would help expand the art program?
Absolutely.
Would be the goal. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Francine, let's go over where these two accounts are. One is from parks preservation fees, and the other is what?
The two fees were a park usage fee, and that is used for special events. It's an additional, it's not even all that much. It's a small fee that the event producers use, have to pay the city for use of the park or the downtown area. It ranges from a hundred dollars up to seven hundred dollars per event.
Because you said parks preservation fee that we've been charging to go ahead and take it, is that the same one you're talking about? I mean, what?
No, it went, those usage fees went into a fund, and initially, the fund was supposed to be a park preservation, or an ass, I should say, asset preservation fund. So, it was to put in for assets for future use.
Okay, so, I'm going to follow this up with the other comments, but I, you know, I've been getting an awful lot of complaints. We just had tours there, saying that we have no money to go ahead and preserve our parks, but we have a park preservation fee that we haven't been using.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Tracy.
Sure. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Councilman Schmidt, what we did, the commission approved some new fees, rental fees for the venues for events. Those just went into place that we're just now charging, and those went into place effective January one of this year. And so, those are being collected in an account that can accumulate and be spent on the committee.
And when you say special events, that's just not special events down there. Somebody rents a park.
The Marina.
The Marina.
Just the Marina in Victoria.
Just Marina and, 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 okay. I'm also being told that this item was covered by the Sparks Tourism and Vitalization Fund here last week?
I can answer that.
Okay. Ms. Ratty?
I think, there we go. Thank you. Not this item. So, what happened, we had a Sparks Tourism Revitaliz, I think it's the Tourism and Revitalization Committee. It's the committee that is charged through NRS to provide oversight to the Victorian Square Room tax dollars.
Right.
That committee met for the second time on Friday, and what that committee did was review the proposed amendments to, or, well, actually, amendment's not the right word. It's a proposed rewrite of the master plan. Before we can spend any dollars on those two and a half cents for Victorian Square Room tax dollars, we have to update the master plan because it is no longer aligned with our current activities. So, one of the items that is in the master plan is a proposal to invest in public art. Those dollars are required to be spent on capital projects only that are tourism-related, and so, that master plan recommendation does include an arts component for capital projects only. The committee voted unanimously to support the overall master plan. There are four other elements, but they're, they live in a, that committee is an advisory committee, and so that plan will come forward to the Spark City Council in the future for their approval. I'm assuming that the City Manager would be briefing you all in your next update, since we just met on Friday, but there is an arts component there. So, kind of, because it hasn't been brought forward to the council yet, I'm assuming that's new information for everybody since it is so fresh, but that could be a potential fund. This could be insurance and things along those lines. The funds in, as you all know, the funds in that two and a half cents for room tax money are very specifically designated capital, Victorian Square, tourism-related dollars. So, we have, still have steps to go, but it was a unanimous recommendation on the part of the committee to bring that forward to the City Council.
Is there a dollar amount attached to that?
I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I'll look to, and I'm getting a nod.
See, and that's what my concern is, that, you know, we have another hundred and fifty thousand coming out after we spend this, and I think if I ask Tracy, can you spend twenty-four thousand dollars on the Marina Park fixing it on up, the answer would probably be yes. You've got enough projects to go ahead and do that right now, and if we are allowed to spend that money and put this money back to where it was supposed to be for park reservations, you know, I think that would be a much better way to go than authorizing this money now and coming back with another hundred and fifty thousand behind that. But, that's up to the council to decide.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a couple. First of all, how do they apply for this committee? Do they go online to the Sparks website?
Yes.
Okay. Is this open to anybody or just citizens of Sparks?
It is open to anyone, since we are specifically looking for people with arts experience.
Okay.
So, we have expanded it into Washoe County.
And is this group of five plus one, or are they going to be the ones to set the criteria for this committee, or if people want to display art, or are we buying art? Are we just going to display it?
Yes. Yes. Yes and yes.
Okay.
So, they would be creating the criteria and also choosing and with public comment.
Okay.
So, they would be helping manage also the public comment part of it.
Okay. Ms. Ratty?
So, when I was first elected to the Spark City Council, I was appointed in our first round of appointments to an Arts and Historic Culture Commission.
And you ran that into the ground?
I ran it into the ground within the first couple of months. I was handed, I want to say it's the nineteen ninety-nine Arts and Culture Plan, but I may not have the right year, but it's going to be around, found the right time. It still sits on my shelf. It was a great plan. There was some movement, you know, way back when to at least initiate a basic arts program for the City of Sparks. I think that we are a full-fledged city, and I think that it is appropriate for us to have a modest arts program, toe in the water, is how I look at this. And so, I'm excited. I think that we do need the two pools of money, because I think that the one is going to, is very limited to capital, and we do need to be able to do some planning first. And while I appreciate all the questions of what are we going to do, what are we going to do, what are we going to do, I completely agree with staff that the right thing to do is to refresh and probably start over to a certain degree within Arts and Cultural Plans, so that there is a direction that that committee can then make decisions based on that direction. And we can't do the planning out of the capital dollars. We would have to do the planning out of some sort of administrative dollars. So, I think that's why we need the two pools of money. But, I'm really excited to see this come back off the shelf. I think it was totally appropriate to put it on the shelf during the recession. There were more important things, but a full-fledged city has an arts program, and so I think this is exciting. So, I would be happy to make a motion. So, I move to approve resolution number three-two-nine-six, establishing the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee as presented to staff and, or by staff, and I just did also want to note that I did hear from the Thirty-Nine North leadership who wanted to be here today but could not, and wanted to express their support.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Nine point three, consideration and possible approval to purchase stop-loss insurance for the city's group health self-funded plan for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen in the amount of three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. Hello there.
Good afternoon. I'm Jen McCall, Senior Analyst from Human Resources. I'm here today to ask for consideration and possible approval to purchase stop-loss insurance for the city's group health plan to protect the plan from catastrophic claims exceeding two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand. This is budgeted for fiscal seventeen. I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have regarding this plan.
Mr. Lawson?
No questions. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Charlene. Ms. Bybee?
I do have a question. It's showing over budget. How much over and why is it indicating on here, or what fund will that come out of?
It's actually not over budget. It was over budget because I entered the council agenda item in this fiscal year. It is an approved budgeted item for fiscal seventeen.
So, it is for the upcoming fiscal year?
Correct.
We do have that budgeted?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lawson? Mr. Schmidt, do you want to, do you have a question?
No, I just want to know if there's, is that the same for all the insurance policies today? Because all of our insurance policies show an over budget.
I believe that was the case. I actually had a note under mine, under fiscal, the fiscal impact, and I'm not sure what happened to the note. It was to indicate that it was indeed budgeted for fiscal seventeen, and I know there's a couple more on the agenda that are budgeted that...
Everything on the budget today with insurance looks to be, says is over budget.
Mine is definitely budgeted. I'll let everyone else speak for theirs.
Okay, now, Mr. Lawson?
Okay. I'm going to move to approve item nine point three as presented by staff.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Schmidt? Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Come on. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you're going to be doing nine-four also, Jen?
No. Dan's here.
Dan, welcome, Dan. Consideration possible approved to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the city for the next policy periods in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. Welcome, Dan.
Good afternoon. Dan Maron, your Contracts and Risk Manager, for the record, and I can speak to the budget question because it does apply to mine as well. When we submit agenda items, it does a budget check against current fiscal year, but the policy years that we're asking for your approval today are all fiscal seventeen, so they are all budgeted in the coming fiscal year based on the budget that you approved a few weeks back. So, I am here to present items both nine point four and nine point five, and with your indulgence, I can probably cover them both very quickly for you. Both nine-four and nine-five represent the annual renewal of insurance policies that cover the events that may occur beyond the city's self-insurance limits. Nine point four is specific to the city properties, and these cover the policies that include property and contents, automotive fiscal damage, cyber liability, general liability, employee dishonesty, and the tenant-user liability policies. Cumulatively across all of the policies, we're seeing an increase of about twelve percent in premium costs, the largest changes occurring in the premium specific to our property coverage and our general liability coverage. These increases are a combination of the natural inflation that's occurring in the insurance markets, but also, unfortunately, the city's claim history over the last few policy years. Again, unfortunately, we've had events that have required claims by the city against both policies that will result in significant payments from those insurers to help cover those costs. With respect to coverage changes, during the current fiscal year, the two thousand and sixteen fiscal year, we were able to add coverage for flood damage to city-owned property. Historically, the city has not carried flood property, flood coverage, or has on a very limited basis because of a lack of availability from the marketplace. But, following the flash flood event last July, and in anticipation of what we expected to be a significant rain year with respect to the El Nino, we were able to add flood coverage to our property line, and that coverage is included in the renewal that's in front of you today. Otherwise, we've maintained all of our level of coverage in all areas matching those we've had in the last twelve months. So, that's everything you have on nine point four. I can roll onto nine point five or take questions on this one.
Go ahead. We'll vote on them separately, but go ahead and do nine point five.
Okay. Nine point five is specific to the wastewater treatment plant, where we carry two insurance policies at the facility. We carry a pollution liability policy that's renewed on a three-year cycle, and that is not due in fiscal seventeen, so you do not see that on your agenda report today. That will come again this time next year. So, the other policy is specific to the property coverage at the facility. The rate that's used to calculate our policy premium remain flat. There aren't any history of claims out there that are causing that to go up. What has increased and affects the total premium is the total value of the facility. As occurred last year with respect to the policy covering city facilities, our insurers, part of their routine process, went through and performed a physical appraisal of Tom Wharf last fall. This was the first appraisal that had been done since two thousand and ten, the first appraisal that was done with our current property carrier, and it resulted in an increase in valuation at the plant of about twenty-two percent. We are seeing an increase here of not to exceed nineteen percent, so it didn't go exactly hand-in-hand, but that is the reason for the increase that you're seeing there, is a move in value at the facility of insured costs from a hundred and ninety-five million to about two hundred and thirty-five million. So, I'm pleased to try to answer questions that you might have. Additionally, we have representatives from Wells Fargo, our broker for all of our insurance policies, that are listed here to deal with any policy-specific questions you might have.
Dan, I have one on nine point five. Is that our share, or is that the total amount?
That is the total amount.
So, ours would only be a third of that?
Correct.
Okay. Questions? Ms. Bybee?
Yeah, Dan, on the appraisal that they did and the increase, the nineteen percent, is that just because the cost to replace things would be higher every year, or is it all of our investment that we've done to try to upgrade a lot of the systems?
It's a combination of both. It's the expansions that have occurred at the plant, some of the natural mechanical upgrades that have happened. It's a reexamination of the buildings, because every insurer looks at things a little bit differently. If I had the appraisal in front of me, you know, a good two hundred pages listing every single individual building, and a majority of their contents that would be affected if we were to have a loss at that building, you know, it's interesting when people look at the values of the facility and say, well, it's got to be worth more than the two hundred and thirty-five million that's there. It's piecing those together and realizing that we're not likely to have a total loss at the facility. You're talking about a building that might have a mechanical failure or a fire or something of that nature. So, it was an appraiser going through, spending three or four days at the facility, taking pictures, putting together lists of contents, and saying, this is what we think the value is should there be an event.
Mr. Lawson?
Dan, what's the total round numbers increase in premiums this year?
Directly to the table that we included there, and these are not to exceed numbers. What happens when we go out to market is the underwriters for each group will come back with what they think the estimate is and then refine them over time. So, these have actually gone down slightly since we prepared the staff report. But, in terms of round numbers for the property covers to the city, we're looking at an increase of about fifty-eight thousand dollars. And with respect to the treatment plant, we're looking at about forty-one thousand dollars, and that's max. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's take nine point four. Looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve item nine point four as outlined by staff.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Nine point five. Looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve item nine point five as presented by staff.
We have a motion, Mr. Schmidt? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point six, consideration and possible approval to purchase an excess insurance policy for workers' compensation for the policy period seven-one, sixteen to six-thirty-seventeen, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand-six-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. I think we're in the wrong business.
Good afternoon. Jill Valdez, Human Resource Analyst, for the record. This policy for workers' compensation excess insurance is a requirement of state law in order for us to have our workers' compensation policy as a self-funded policy. I am very pleased to report this year that while at the beginning of the calendar year, we anticipated a rate increase, when the excess insurance carrier reviewed our claims history for the past year, they were pleased and they maintained the same rate and no increase in our self-insured retention amount. So, you do see a slight estimated increase. So you do see a slight estimated increase. That is simply because the rate that is applied is applied to payroll, and so the estimate of payroll is slightly increased. But the workers' compensation excess policy is essentially the same as what we brought before you last policy year, last fiscal year, and we're looking to continue with the same carrier this coming year.
Okay, any questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I'm going to approve the purchase of an excess insurance policy for workers' compensation for the policy period 7-1, 2016 to 6-30, 2017, in the amount of $88,617, and authorize the contracts and risk manager to execute agreements for the policy.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Ratty?
Second.
We have a motion. A second. Any further discussion? Ms. Ratty, do you have a discussion?
No, that was just...
Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jill. Thank you. Okay, 9.7 is the first reading.
Bill number 2706. A general ordinance rezoning real property owned by Sparks Marina RB Park from new urban district to mixed-use district on a site totaling 10.23 acres in size located at 675 Marina Gateway, Sparks, Nevada, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for bill number 2706. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, June 27, 2016. 9.8 is also a first reading.
Bill number 2707. A general ordinance rezoning real property owned by Semics Construction Materials Pacific LLC from tourist commercial to industrial for a parcel totaling approximately 4.32 acres in size located at 350 Gauleti Way, Sparks, Nevada, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for bill number 2707. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, June 27, 2016. Thank you. Okay, public hearing items. 10.1. Public hearing and possible approval of resolution number 3297, and that's as far as I'm going to read, because it's a... Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Smith, a member of the city council. I'm Armando Ornelas. I'm the Assistant Community Service Director for Development. This is the... Basically, the development agreement for the Bridges project, which provides specifically for the redevelopment agency to sell two parcels to the developer, which is specifically the LLC SWD Quarry Bridges LLC. This is basically the Silverwing-led entity, and Silverwing is the entity, of course, that is under construction currently on Fountain House. So with regard to what we're doing here today, there's a companion item on the redevelopment agency agenda, and what the city council's role is, is to conduct a public hearing, and if it determines it's going to do so, approve a resolution that provides consent for the redevelopment agency to sell property. So under Nevada redevelopment law, the redevelopment agency has to have the city council's consent. And then the city would also be a party to the development agreement, so we're asking you to consider approval of the disposition and development agreement, which provides for the terms of the sale of the property. I'm going to pull... The map up, and I think it'll be easier here to explain what we're doing. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay, there's two parcels involved, just for purposes of orienting you. Here is Victorian Avenue along the south here. Here is the plaza. The movie theater is here. The parking structure adjacent to movie theater is directly to the east of movie theater, and then there are these two parcels that are outlined and shaded in the red dash lines. This northern parcel, we're referring to it as the northern parcel, is that parking lot directly in front of the parking structure, and then across Avenue of the Oaks to the south is the southern parcel, and that's the second parcel that's the subject of this development agreement. In terms of what's to be constructed there... We have... Maybe this view will be the best here. One sec to load. Okay, so if we look at this bottom elevation here, this would be standing basically at the entrance to Avenue of the Oaks. If you were between the Silver Club Hotel and the Silver Club, former Silver Club Casino Building, looking east down Avenue of the Oaks. And on the right here, this would be on the northern parcel. What we're talking about in terms of construction is a three-story concrete and steel parking deck, and then on top of that, two floors of housing. And then this parcel would be connected to the property to the south, the southern parcel, by a sky bridge, which would require an easement, and the ground floor of this would be a single parking deck, a single-story parking deck. And in the front, you would have commercial space, approximately 15,000 square feet of commercial space, and then the southern half of that parking deck would be parking for those uses, and then sitting on top of that single-story parking deck would be four stories of housing. So that's the proposal. It totals approximately 190... I think the number has gone up and down a little bit. I think it's somewhere between 192 and 197 apartments, plus the 15,000 square feet on the south of commercial space, and approximately 5,000 square feet of commercial space along the Avenue of the Oaks in the northern parcel. So that's the project, if you will, in a nutshell, and I think the developer's representative is here and certainly can speak more to the details of the project if you have questions along those lines. The... As I said, the city council is asked to consider two actions. One is approval of resolution that provides consent for the city council to sell the property, and then the second is approval of the DDA. I'm going to go through a couple of the terms of the DDA, just to point out or highlight some particulars. In terms of the price, the proposed price was based on appraisals. There's a summary appraisal that's required, and that was done by Reese Perkins, and then there was a review of that appraisal done, as required by NRS 279, and that was done by Bill Kimmel. And the price based on the appraisal is $750,000, which equates to $12.64 a square foot. The... If the sales price is established as being fair market value, then these properties are not subject, for purposes of prevailing wage, to that condition of prevailing wage. So no prevailing wage will be required for the construction of these... of this project. The... I want to point out one thing with regard to the southern parcel. The developer has requested, and there is provision in the DDA for potential abandonments of an area of the alley here, which would narrow the alley and expand the size of that parcel. If the city council... It would be separate legislative action. There's been an application made, and staff has just started to process that. If the... If there is an abandonment of any of this area here, then we would adjust the sales price on a square foot basis, and it would be done by refreshing the appraisal for the project. So there's a possibility here that the actual sales price will be somewhat higher to reflect the fact that this parcel may grow in size if areas abandoned to it. Ultimately, though, this alley must remain in place, and it will serve as an access for emergency purposes. It'll be a public access as well, and one of the things that staff worked very closely with the developer's engineering team on was making sure that we would be able to get a fire truck here through here, because this would be one of the locations where a fire truck would have to set up in order to fight a fire in that structure if there were one. Hopefully, that's never the case. So that... There is that possibility in terms of adjustment of the price based on an abandonment. In terms of the project schedule, there is an early termination date of June 30 of 2017. That would be the date by which construction would have to start.
What was the date again?
June 30, 2017. I think the developer's representative that they would like to be under construction this fall. You know, we provided some extra time there in case, you know, something arises. And then in terms of an absolute deadline, the end of 2018, December 31, 2018, would be the absolute deadline, so that would be the date by which the project would need to be completed. So that's approximately two and a half years for construction of the project. In terms of other provisions of the project that I wanted to point out, or the DDA, going back to this exhibit... There is a provision that calls for the city and the redevelopment agency to agree to not add any additional stories to the parking structure that's adjacent to the theater. If you were standing on the parking deck right now and looking to the south, here on this lower elevation is what you would see, these two floors of apartments. And so the developer requested this provision in order to be able to make sure that there was air and light for these units. These would be opening up, you know, facing the garage, and if stories were added or structures were added on top of the parking structure, then obviously the air and light for this would be affected, and the marketability of those units would be affected. So that was a... That's a provision that's in the DDA specifically. So beyond that, this DDA is very, very similar to the one that was approved for the Fountain House project. You know, it was modeled on that particular agreement. And with that, the... I want to note that the statute, NRS 279, does not provide specific criteria for the council to consider or findings to make before granting the consent and therefore the approval of the resolution. You are required to have a public hearing. We are required to publish notice of the public hearing once a week for two weeks, and so that was done in the Renovacet Journal on June 1 and on June 8. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions or comments, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Armando, when we opened up, entered into the E&amp;A and approval of the council, one of the things that I had requested, that a jobs housing balance report be looked at on what we're looking at now with such drastic changes as downtown. Is that report available?
There's not a report. I can walk you through what the possibilities are here in terms of square footage for purposes of non-residential development. Donna, would you? So the land within this area here that would remain available for commercial development includes primarily these six parcels along the plaza, three on each side. In terms of these two parcels directly in front of the theater, there's, per the approved plans, as you may recall, there is restaurant space proposed here and here directly facing onto the plaza, and there's approximately 600 square feet of restaurant space on each of those two parcels. And then moving down here on the... To these parcels, south of Avenue of the Oaks, there is 11,281 square feet there, 11,204 square feet here, similar numbers on the other side. So in terms of these six parcels, the available square footage, just at the ground floor level, is 53,462 square feet approximately. Certainly, that could be increased somewhat if these areas between the parcels on either side of the plaza are bridged, as has been discussed. If upper floor uses are added that are something other than residential, that could be increased. There is... These parcels along the Victorian Avenue frontage, you know, there's different owners. I know that the Nugget is looking to acquire one or more of these parcels, so there's a possibility there for additional square footage. And then... And so taking just these six parcels, the commercial space in the two Bridges parcels, we're looking at about 60,462 square feet. And then, of course, the other substantial opportunity for employment generating uses, Councilman Schmidt, is the redevelopment of the former Silver Club Bourbon Square property. Those are approximately 38,000 square foot floor plates, and so the top two floors represent about 76,000 square feet of potential employment generating uses.
I'm really disappointed that staff didn't follow through with this item, because there's a whole bunch more that you're not saying there. Victorian Avenue, how many square feet of commercial did we give up with the project that's going on right now? That was all scheduled to be first floor commercial and stuff on top of that. How much did we give up there?
Well, that project, Councilman Schmidt, was never firmly defined, if you will, in the sense that, you know, there was a project concept developed and marketed, but basically it would be about 20... It was approximately 100,000 to 120,000 square feet of space.
I'm going back to the original study that we put together, cost this city about $400,000 to do that came up with a job housing balance. What was going... What we should be doing is square footage of residential. What we should be doing is square footage as commercial, and where are we at with that report that we did? That was recommendations 10, 12 years ago that would create a work-live environment place for everybody, that there could be income to the city and everything else. Where are we at in this whole thing? I mean, because a year ago, we had a six-story apartment building, or a six-story office building going there. So that was all scheduled to be commercial there, all up and down Virginia that presently has apartments on it. It was all scheduled to be commercial on the bottom and residence on the top. That's all gone. Now you have... I don't think we ever in a report I've ever seen that shows we're going to be putting over 400 housing units in that space down there. So we've drastically decreased commercial, and we've tremendously increased residential. And we don't even want to look at a report on how this figures for 10 years down the road?
Well, Councilman Schmidt, I would suggest to the council that what we're doing with this proposed project is consistent with the adopted Victorian Square Development Plan, that a plan was amended again in January of this year. It allowed on these parcels for either the office use or residential purposes. So certainly, it is this council's decision and the redevelopment agency's decision as to whether or not they want to approve this DDA, but I'm... What I would say to the council is that what we're bringing forward today is not at all inconsistent with the approved Victorian Square redevelopment plan.
But if we brought it forward with the report on what we gave up and what we've done, we would have a good idea of how much commercial, what our taxes, our tax base would look like for the future, because we all know that once these things are built, residential doesn't pay. You're looking at 10 years. You're upside down now with your services versus income. You can't go back and change it. Once you do it, you can't go back and change it. Let's talk about the additional increase request for no increase in the parking garage. We have less than 60 days. We have a vacant building in there. If I put a 5,000-seat performing arts center there in that space, how many parking spaces do I need for that?
Well, Councilman Schmidt, we would have to look at... I don't know what it would be... What would be required in terms of parking for a 5,000-seat venue?
Substantially more than the 700 we have right now. Where are we going to do something like that? We want to enter into a private partnership for that building, public-private partnership to do something with that building, and we're locked with 700 units of parking space. We've just devalued that building to half, if not more than that, because we can't... We couldn't even replace that building with how many seats in it right now and be able to do it, because we're giving up all the parking in front of the parking garage. Again, we're losing parking downtown, and we're giving up all future... And we're giving up all future project parking that was scheduled to go three stories on up.
Well, again, you know, those are hypothetical situations. Certainly, the, it's the council's prerogative to determine whether they want to approve this project or not. Obviously, when you develop land, there's an opportunity cost and, you know, I-
But you and I both know you got less than 60 days that building's vacant, right?
No, that, 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 the lease on that movie theater runs through September 30th. So-
Okay, three months. We got three months that building is, becomes vacant. So, we have a problem. That building becomes vacant and people are going to be looking to what to do with it.
Presumably so.
So, we give up, we give up the possibility of turning that building into City Hall, to, to a event center, to anything else. Like, we give up all that because we're giving up our additional parking space.
Well, again, you know, there's 700 spaces in that garage. It, it certainly can accommodate on a day-to-day basis, you know, the uses that are there now, which include the, the movie theater, which of course has a parking demand. So, you know, I think any future development will, yes, will, you know, will involve a calculation about parking. Most, most uses that would be needing parking are going to look to, to self-park it if they can. Certainly, that's been the case with, you know, the residential development here. Certainly, in terms of this particular developers' contemplation of a mixed-use project for these parcels along here, you know, they've considered building parking into those, into that proposal. So, you know, we would have to take it on a, on a case, a case basis as, as we move forward.
Bottom line here, I think you're moving way too fast with this thing. You know, downtown is going to have a very drastic, I've said it for three years now since this project started. You go down there right now and you see a whole different feel, you see different, I mean, you know, in the wintertime, you're going to see piles of snow and everything because it's going to become dark. I mean, it's going to be, you know, a light restricted area. You don't have the movement that you have that you've, you've been accustomed to. You're going to have an awful lot of traffic, place of people trying to be parking down there for visiting these, these things, these apartments that are under construction. I don't think anybody in this room can visualize what's going to be happening in this area. And then, you're going to double that and then take away parking at the same time to do that. I think you've got, this is not what it was scheduled to be.
Well, I guess the, the last comment I would make, Councilman Schmidt and members of the city council is, on March 28th, I was here, I presented an item, staff asked for direction to prepare, negotiate and prepare this development agreement. That was three months ago. We, we did as directed. I'm bringing it back to you and it is up to you as to whether you want to approve the development agreement.
You know, for me, if you've been against this for three years, Mr. Schmidt, I've never heard a word until right now. That parking garage holds 17, or 700 cars. I have never seen the garage and the lot full for any movie that they've shown. So, I, I believe there's plenty of parking there for that. Ms. Ratty.
So, thank you, Mayor Protem. So, I'm in full support of moving forward with this project. I think that it would be great to strive towards an ideal commercial, retail, residential balance. But as often my, my peers here on the council will remind me, it's got a pencil in the market. And we've been working for 30 years to find something that pencils in the market and have finally found some things that somebody is actually willing to build in Victorian Square. I completely agree that it is going to change the character, but if, if you look at the lower left-hand of this drawing, there's been a significant regional investment in a transit center. And this is one of our prime transit-oriented development corridors where what we're looking to achieve is density that in turn, we hope, will drive transit, which in turn should be less parking intensive. In terms of the cost of providing service, yes, residential is more expensive than commercial and retail, but the flip side of that is, this is a great example of moving away from urban sprawl, which is the most expensive for us to serve and having things that are right downtown, closest to our fire station that has the most urban tools to fight fires. So, it is, it's going to be very different. It's going to be four stories, you know, it's going to be-
Six.
And five, five and four. So, four on the left, five on the right. So, it's going to be, it's going to be very different. And, and I think that's a good thing. I think that that's what we've been trying to achieve in Victorian Square for quite some time. So, I'll be supporting the project. I do think that there is an interesting thing that's happening in town with a, with a potential maybe overbuilding of apartments, but the market will figure that out. And I think the good news here is that this particular developer is pushing hard, pushing us hard, to get it out of the ground and get it out of the ground quickly. So, everybody, I've, I've talked to a number of people who are excited about living down there. And I spend quite a bit of time on Victorian Square. The vast majority of the time, if there is not a special event, there is nobody down there. And so, for me, with the movie theater closing, the most important thing that we need to do is get bodies down there so that there's some number of people who can support something in that space. And without getting this number of bodies down there, I don't know how we do it. So, again, I'm in favor and will be voting to support it.
Ms. Adams.
Except for we haven't had the, the public hearing yet.
Yeah, my question had to do with the easements. The city's being asked to grant two pretty major easements. One, currently an air easement for the Sky Bridge, and the other one is a negative easement relating to the parking garage. Those easements obviously have some value. Have those been penciled in? Is the city going to get anything for that? I mean, it's certainly something that the city can and is entitled to ask for compensation for.
City Attorney Adams, no, those, those easements, if you will, have not been specifically priced.
Thank you. I mean, it's certainly up to the city council whether or not they want to look into that further, but it is, it is an asset that the city has that is certainly worth something, knowing to the developers. But as Councilman Schmidt pointed out, that could have a, you know, adverse impact on us if we forever foreclose an opportunity to build onto that parking garage. And I think the city council is entitled to compensate for that if they, if they so desire.
Well, there's certainly a question with regard to, in fact, any, any additional decks could be added to that, to that parking structure. Would require fairly substantial code analysis and engineering analysis to determine whether, under current codes, you know, you could add decks to that structure and whether or not that would be a cost-effective way to go.
Am I pointing to simply that once you grant that type of an easement, a negative easement, you, you don't ever get it back. And that's, light and air easements, they're litigated all the time and usually between one rich homeowner and another rich homeowner. And you're, you're blocking my view. So, the purposes of the easement are the same, but nevertheless, the economic value is still there.
Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll address two things. I did ask staff about light and air easements and they said that, no, they were not asking for any compensation for light and air easements for properties, much less the inability not to use that property again. Second, I'll address Mr., my comment on three years. Three years ago, my comment was that this has drastically changed downtown. I've supported, you know, Mr. Witt's first project, still support it today because it was important to get something started out there. I've never said that for three years I haven't supported the project. My, my comment was, three years, I told you, changes are coming. Changes are coming very, very fast on this and you should be aware of what you're going to get before you continue, you know, building on, on something. You know, going one year with what you have right now, I think you're going to be able to flush out a lot of the issues that you're going to have downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bybee.
Armando, I did have a question. My understanding, well, the first parcel, the south parcel, that we originally had agreed, preliminary agreement that was looking at office space for commercial. My understanding is the reason this has shifted is because right now, the market is not showing that that would be a feasible investment for the investor to do, that we don't have a market there for that much commercial in that particular building. Is that part of the reason that we're looking at something different than that original purpose for that plot?
That's correct. I mean, basically, Mr. Witt, Silverwing developed a, a concept, if you will, for a multi-story office product on that, on that site. You know, there's, you don't, you're not seeing Class A office space being constructed in the market, you know, of this type that's feasible. At, you know, at least at the present time.
Okay. But the project as it stands will have commercial on the lower floor, on both sides.
It would have some. It would have basically the, the front and along Victorian Ave-, or Avenue of the Oaks here would be a row of storefronts. And I guess there's some space in there for the, for the development's own use. But yeah, it's a, it's a row of, of space here and then some here at the, I guess, the southwest corner of this side of the, of the project as well.
Okay. And that's possible commercial or retail?
Yeah, it's, it's, in total, it's approximately a little under 20,000 square feet. Office, office or, or commercial use.
Office, retail, restaurants, offices. I, I think that, that the project, you're right, you know, Councilman Schmidt, you're right, that downtown is not going to look like it has. And I think that's a good thing. I think downtown Sparks has great special events, but we've been a parking lot for special events for years. And I've, I'm the newest here, the rest of you have sat here and watched, nothing happened downtown. And I think, I think the prospects are exciting to have live, work and play. And I see what we're doing right now with the apartments, with the mix with retail, with bringing restaurants, with the plaza eventually coming in with all lower floors and maybe more, maybe first and second floor, if we feel that there is, you know, a market for more commercial and retail to supplement that, for people to live downtown, for them to use transit, for them to, you know, for it to be an urban environment that attracts a very different population than what we've seen, is really what we're looking, a live, work, play, vibrant downtown that we've never had here in Sparks. And I support the concept, I support what we're doing right now, look forward to seeing, obviously, the movie theater for us is a challenge right now and what happens there, whether we do get someone to operate the movie theater or it becomes something else that's a centerpiece of, of the property there and we have to find use for that or the owner of that property does, and, and that's a challenge that we do face. But the development going on in this particular project, I support. I, I think it's, it's what we need right now and we still have room for more commercial and retail to come in on the center of the plaza, to come in along Victorian Avenue. And I, I think, I, I think that will support the financial needs that we need, but I think getting people living down there and then things for them to do, places for them to spend the money and offices for them to be in is something that supplements that and I do support this project and what we're doing right now. I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I think it's going to be great.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing and I'll open it up to the public now. Anybody in the public wishing to speak on this subject? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for action. This is a two-part motion. The first one, the first part will be to approve the redevelopment to sell the two Victorian Square parcels. Ms. Ratty.
I move to approve resolution number 3297, approving the redevelopment agency's sale of two Victorian Square parcels to SWD Quarry Bridges LLC.
Okay, we have a second. Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional?
And I understand, Councilman Schmidt's hesitancy, but I think at the same time, we need to work on infill. This is infill. I think you bring a thousand people down there, it's pretty exciting, things will change, and I think the commercial will bear out as, as it comes along. But services-wise, we're not covering the same real estate as we would in a normal urban sprawl. So, it works for me on that level. So, I'm willing to support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes four to one. Mr. Schmidt is a no. Okay, the second part of the motion should talk about the disposition and development agreement. Mr. Lawson.
No, I just minded. They don't turn off anymore.
Okay.
I mean, for my design.
There we go.
You want to make it or?
I, I got you.
Ms. Ratty, go ahead.
I move to approve the disposition and development agreement with SWD Quarry Bridges LLC for execution by the city.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Second.
Oh, I saw your name there, I'm sorry. Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes four to one. Mr. Schmidt is a no. Okay, moving on to 11.1. Consideration of, of and possible action on a request for tentative and final approvals to amend the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook. Welcome, Karen.
Karen Malby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is a consideration of impossible action on a request for tentative and final approval of an amendment to the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook. This is, the amendment includes the removal of this parcel. Right now, the map that I'm present on the screen right now shows you've got essentially three parcels in this plan development handbook. What this amendment is to remove, this parcel that's on the corner, this would be Marina Gateway here, this is Lincoln. So, this is the parcel on the northwest corner that they're asking to remove. It's approximately 240, um, 200, I'm sorry, 2.46 acres in size. The city council approved the final handbook in August of 2002 for this, the Marina Landing Plan Development. In 2004, there was a, requested an amendment to this handbook. What they wanted to do was add this area here into the handbook and expand the RV park. The city council in 2004 denied that request. So, this property here has been zoned, New Urban District or NUD, without a handbook. The council approved the amendment in 2012 to allow this use up here to have a gas station, which is now the Maverick, is located on this property. As part of the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook, the 2.46 acre parcel, which is located on the northwest corner here, has been, in the handbook, is referred to as the Marina Lighthouse area, has never been developed. These other parcels are developed. You've got the Maverick here with a car wash and then you've got the RV park here. What the developer intends to do is combine this 2.46 acres parcels with this eight acre parcel and develop it as one. The, you have already read the first reading for the zone change, which would be affecting both of these properties. That will be reviewed on May, sorry, June 27th. On May 5th, 2016, the planning commission reviewed the tentative and final handbook proposal that is before you today and recommends approval. In reviewing the, the plan development findings, the removal of the Marina Lighthouse portion of the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook will not affect the public welfare or health of the Sparks Marina area. This project has not been developed and is in the remaining vacant parcel within that plan development. The applicant is requesting to remove this parcel from the handbook to allow it to be developed with the eight acres to the north. This amendment does not depart from the zoning or subdivision regulations with, which would otherwise be applicable because any future development on these parcels will be reviewed and have to comply with zoning codes and building codes and all, any other requirements. It will not change the previously approved ratio of residential to non-residential in this plan development, as there is no residential in this plan development handbook. It will not change the previously approved open space requirements or maintenance provisions in the plan development. It does not impact already developed portions of the plan development. Any impacts relating to the neighborhood when they develop the 10 acres will be addressed when we review the development applications for that 10 acres. The handbook's terms and conditions intended to protect the interests of the public, residents and owners during an extended- residents and owners during an extended development period, are not modified by this amendment, and the proposed amendment only removes the parcel and the standards related to it from the handbook. This is also a request to be in a final approval of that amendment to the handbook. Staff has reviewed the final handbook for the Marina Landing Plan Development, and based on the provisions that are listed in the NRS, staff has opinion that the proposed amendment of the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook is in substantial compliance with the tentative handbook as approved or will be approved. The final handbook does not vary the proposed gross density residential, since there's actually no residential in the handbook. Does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential. Does not reduce the common open space. There is no increase in the floor area for the non-residential use. There is no increase in the total ground floor area covered by the buildings, nor is there substantial change in the heights of the building. The amendment will reduce the area of the handbook. Due to the fact that this is a request to amend a recorded final handbook, staff determined that this amendment should be reviewed as a public hearing, which is what is being done today. That concludes my presentation. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of the tentative and final amendment of this handbook.
Thank you, Karen. Questions, comments, Mr. Schmidt?
Karen, this whole thing is only removing that piece of land out of the final handbook.
Well, removing that handbook and any associated standards that were in the handbook relating to the Marina Lighthouse property, yes.
Removing all that. The other pieces of land that's next to it and this piece of land, that all comes to us later on, and it's all going to go NUD. It's all automatic, go to NUD, and that whole thing will come to us at a later date.
The 10-acre development?
Correct.
It possibly could. It depends on what they, at this point, we don't know for sure what they're developing. So it'd depend on what kind of application that they process. It could be just an administrative review, which then would not be before the City Council.
All we're doing is pulling that one out of the final handbook to allow the two pieces of land, the 10 acres, to be joined together, and that's it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll open up the public. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? You're good? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the request for tentative and final amendments of the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 16013, adopting findings PDA through PDG and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Karen. Okay, moving on to number 12. Do we have a closed-door session today, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, comments from the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, comments from the City Council and City Manager? Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have two things today. The first is an announcement. The following committee appointments are available. The Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee, they're looking for one member of the construction industry for a four-year term. All subsequent appointments will be for four-year terms. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the City Clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us, where you would click on City Services on the webpage. You would then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then you would go to City of Sparks Volunteer Application Link. Applications for this open position will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, June 17th. Second, Mr. Protem, if I might. I have an announcement, a citywide announcement that I want to make, and I'm doing it kind of with both positive and negative feelings about it. Last week, I received a retirement notification from your fire chief. Mr. Garrison, when he took the job, had said that he was looking to start the next chapter of his life later this year, and as a man of his word, as we all know that, he's making those plans, and he's given me adequate notice for that. So on September 16th, at 5 o'clock, Mr. Garrison will be stepping down as your fire chief. As you're aware, I've been conducting interviews for in-house candidates over the last five months, and so I will be bringing to you possibly, and then my goal is in your next meeting, to bring forward, and my selection will be for your approval, will be Division Chief Chris Maples. What we'll be doing is a transition between, you know, the 1st of July until September to get those things going, so we'll have one chief going out, we'll have another one being prepared to go in. So I'm working out the details on how that needs to work under the collective bargaining agreements and employment agreements, and you should have it soon. So congratulations to Mr. Garrison for a great career that he still has a little bit more to do on, and then I'm looking forward to a conversation with the council with Mr. Maples and looking for his ratification. So that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I know we have time till September, but your accomplishments won't go unnoticed, Chief, and you've done a great job for us in the meantime with this. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, without objection, we are adjourned.
Development Agency Special Meeting, following the City Council meeting on 6/13/2016, with a roll call. Chairperson Ratty?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini, absent.
Bybee?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Like to open up public comment? Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, let's move on to approval of the agenda.
To approve?
Second. Got a motion from Agency Member Lawson, seconded by Agency Member Bybee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or vote.
Or vote.
Oh, we can vote? All those signify by voting. Forgot, sorry, forgot we could use that. Passes unanimously. Item 5.1, minutes. We do not have any minutes for this particular meeting. Moving on to item 6.1, public hearing, consideration and possible approval of a disposition and development agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks and SWD Quarry Bridges LLC. This is a companion item to the item that we just heard on the City Council agenda.
Chairwoman Ratty, members of the agency, Armando Nellis, Assistant Community Services Director for Development. Yes, this is the companion item to the one heard by the City Council. Specifically, the redevelopment agency is asked to approve the development agreement. There's no other action besides that.
Nothing different from the item we just heard?
Right, it's the same agreement, both the city and the agency are parties to it.
So I'm going to go ahead and open up a public hearing. Do we have any comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close it and bring it back to the board.
Move to approve?
Second.
So I have a motion from Agency Member Smith, seconded by Agency Member Lawson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four one with Ron Schmidt, no. Excuse me. All right, sorry, having a little technical difficulties there. All right, item 7.1, comments from the public again. Anybody wish to comment? Seeing none, any comments from the agency or Chief Administrative Officer?
I have one. Just a reminder, on June 23rd at 5:30 PM at the Marina, they'll have the Holly Quick Memorial Garden. They'll have a little barbecue and everything out there. If you can attend, they would appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.